All right, I'm gonna start the meeting. Call and order. Uh, roll call. This is the joint meeting of the DPW Subcommittee and Town Council, August 18th, 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room, roll call. Councilor Marchetti is here. Councilor Dow.
President.
Gus Steves. Mr. Steves.
President.
Steve Lazzo.
President.
Kevin Spahn.
Right.
If anybody has a chance to please sign in. Thank you. Appreciate it. Consider an approved joint DPW Town Council meeting minutes on July 28th, 2022.
No, sure.
Second. Any questions?
The only corrections I had in items number two and three, Kevin's name is...
Go ahead.
Other than that, I'm...
Yep, all right. Those smart computers.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody? No?
Yeah, I'm all signed up, thank you.
All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Thank you. Agenda item number four, Citizens Forum. I'm gonna allow Kevin Splain to step down as a member, so he can speak at Citizens Forum. Kevin?
I have a few things I'd like to know if I can get some answers on. First one is, can we get an update as far as what's going on with the DPW Director's position? So that would be through you to the Town Manager.
Mr. Town Manager, did you wanna answer that, or did you wanna just get back down on it?
Well, you know, I'll kinda make my standing suggestion that usually these types of forums are for things to be brought to the attention of the council, because otherwise to have a discussion that's something, you know, we don't wanna lend to an open meeting law violation. Short order is, we're still taking applications. Uh, we don't have anybody at the moment. But, you know, I just wanna keep everything short and sweet, so it doesn't become a protracted discussion.
Nope, that answered. I'm satisfied with that. So my next question to the manager would also be, what's the status now with that Assistant to the Engineer's Position?
We will evaluate the candidates that we have, based on the criteria given to us by council. There was a lot of suggestions...
I forgot to shut it off. That's my nephew.
The, uh, you know, there were a lot of suggestions made at that meeting by council and others as to what the individuals should have. And then again, under the charter, it is the recommendation of the, um, the Director of the DPW to leave for an appointment to go into council, so we'll go through the process.
Okay. Next question is, do we have a status update as far as Main Street? We did a walk around in late May and...
Yep. The, we have gone back and forth several times with written proposals and counter-proposals. Um, we're utilizing VHB. I had a meeting on Friday with the VHB engineers. Uh, we evaluated, we've each proposed what we believe needs to be done to satisfy the concerns that we all came back with. Um, they have given us, you know, several things they think that they would be willing to do. We've, in any negotiations, there's things that we accept, there's things we don't, so we're going back and forth until we believe, um, we have something that is satisfactory, that I think would please the people in town. So, we're still negotiating.
All right, I was just concerned, 'cause I know that one-year warranty is coming up and...
I, I, I think we'll be, you know, we won't let anything happen, but once you put them on notice, I think we would be in good ground if it had to go somewhere else. And, you know, the idea would be to avoid getting it into a protracted legal issue, but rather try and come to terms on what our primary focus is. Really, what we're concerned about is getting that main quarter paid to our satisfaction, so...
All right. The next is, a lot of people in, excuse me, a lot of people in town have been complaining about the road conditions from Westville to the Town, Sturbridge Town Line. I know Matt's not here. I don't know if anybody here...
From where? South Street.
South Street. From Westville to the Town Line. I don't know if you've driven that road, or anybody else has driven it?
I have.
I have.
That road is horrendous. And a lot of people, Facebook around town, it's...
Is it after the work that was done?
It's the work that they're doing. Their patches that they're doing are worse than what Main Street was in South Bridge. And a lot of people are complaining about that. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, I've brought this up twice, and nothing seems to become of it, and it happens to be on Chestnut Street and South Bridge. The establishment, the business that's on, uh, Chestnut Street, there's a telephone pole in front of his property that a company came in and cut the sidewalk out in front of the telephone pole, and it's been about three months. And that place is extremely business with, busy with functions, and, I mean, it's, it's a six-inch drop, and you can't even get, I mean, it's the whole length of the sidewalk. And I'm just, I have, there's an elderly lady at walks, and she called me about it, 'cause I do up in that neighborhood.
All right, I will follow up on that one.
Thank you. Are you all set? All right, well, you can go back to the committee now. Uh, I just wanna add, as far as allowing people to speak out, I'm always gonna let people speak out. We're not voting on anything, so I don't see how it's a violation of open being laws. We're just having a discussion, that's all.
Hey, just making my point, sir.
Hold on. Town Manager wanted to say something.
Well, it's really, we shouldn't get into an in-depth discussion on something that isn't properly posted. So that's why I give a short answer, but if we all get into a big, long discussion, then I think that's where we would run into trouble.
All right. I'm always gonna err on the side of allowing free speech, though. We'll let people talk. Go ahead.
No, normally what will happen is, is a citizen member will come up to the chair, speak directly to the chair. The chair then turns, should take all those notes down, go back with you at the next meeting, the next meeting, instead of speaking, and I know it's going through, but that should be how it should work.
I know. I know, that's how it usually works at the Town Council.
I just wanna clarify.
Anybody else have anything? Any citizens? George, all right. Now we'll move on to agenda item number five. Discuss and vote on transferring the money from the sale of the Wells Building Real Estate Project, number 65220. Sale of real estate, balance an account of $1,277,500 to Road Paving Construction and Reconstruction Fund Project, number 64843, to pay the costs of paving roadways throughout town, construction and reconstructing roadways. Could I have a motion, please?
Someone?
Now, before we go on here, I just wanna give a little rundown here. Back in 2020, I believe the Wells School Building was sold for 1.3 million. I, I looked at the Wynn Company's website, they started construction in 2020, and at a September meeting, the Town Manager said he was working on closing, so I'm going to presume that the Wells Building was sold in 2020 for 1.3 million. Uh, also in 2020, we did a road improvement study that was paid for by a grant through the state, and in '21, DPW Subcommittee voted to implement a road improvement plan. The Town Manager made a proposal to borrow money every year, 1.5 million per year, to fix our roads. He even had it listed in the budget books, 1.5 million every year, '21, '22, '23, '24, and so on, right up to '27. There was also a plan to use marijuana money. Uh, he was, you were expecting that you would, we might have somewhere near 1.3 million in marijuana money for next year. Now, in '21, we did several road projects. We did crack ceiling, fog ceiling, micro-surface, melon overlay, for a total of 1.5 million. This year, 2022, there were five roads that were proposed for melon overlay only, no, no crack ceiling, no fog ceiling, no micro-surfacing, just Ellis Road, North and Mechanic, Moon Street, Crane Street, or Moon Street and Coombe Street, for a total of $995,000. So that is far short of 1.5 million. Now, we, 2022, the council awarded the bid to Piapi for $951,000, base bid, bid only, Ellis Road, North and Mechanic, for a total of $880,000. I believe the council voted 1 million. Uh, Moon Street and Coombe Street were out. So now the proposal tonight is to transfer Wells School money to Road Improvement Account, 1.3 million. And the question that I have is, do we want to name specific roads to this plan? I know several councils have had some comments about possibly we should put some of the roads back in that were taken out this year, such as Everett, Poplar, Morris Street, Moon and Cooms. Dennison and Galkwood are also two roads that we have discussed in the past. Those are quite expensive and would probably eat up the entire amount, but if we concentrate on just some of these other roads, we could probably keep the costs, uh, under a million. And there's also been some, also some suggestions that we use some of the money on sidewalks and also on building projects. So, I'm just gonna let it go around the room and let everybody talk on this who wants to talk. Let's start with Councilor, uh, Steve Lazzo.
Thank you. Um, I agree with spending the money on the roads and the sidewalks, but I would just spend on the roads and the sidewalks. I wouldn't do the buildings with that money. Um, as you know, Galkwood Road, the money was there for that section to be done, and they, Heather took it and used it on the Mill Street Bridge, and it was in rough shape. That is still a mess. Now, we're doing Ellis Road, and it's connecting where the new school road is to Ellis. That section is what is supposed to be done. I think that should be done out of this money also, just to clean that whole area up and be done with it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Kevin?
I was wondering if I could make a motion to amend this, to add the sidewalks, um, after paving roadways and before throughout town.
Okay, somebody wanna second that?
Oh, great.
All right. So there's an amendment to add the sidewalks to the, uh, to the agenda. Should we vote on that now, Gus? It's a good idea to vote on that now, or continue the discussion?
We could do it now, and we were having a discussion about the, the overall issues anyway. I mean, it's a formality, I suppose.
May I make just a comment real quick?
Sure.
I understand about the amendment, but just hold off until everybody starts kinda speaking about it, since we're kinda, I think, an informal formal space.
Yeah, all right, that's fine. Anybody else? Gus, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, yeah. Uh, one thing I was thinking, obviously, I'm inclined to agree with the, especially with Everett Street. Do we have a rough cost of what it would take to do Everett Street? And, 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 um, are they, is National Grid even done with that project in Everett Street? Huh? They're not? I'm not surprised. They think we're ever doing Everett.
The list from, uh, DPW was $615,000 to do Everett Street.
Yeah, okay. 'Cause that's, that's obviously one of the major streets, and that means, and so if that's the case, then it would make sense, as much as we would like to get Everett Street done, um, it makes sense not to do it right now. What about the rest of Dresser Street? Where does that stand? I mean, 'cause you got the other half of Dresser that they, they got the half that they paved up near the old high school, um, that has already been broken. Um, and then you've got the other half that was never done at the beginning, which is still in us. Um, so that might not be a bad idea, since that's a major street with a lot of traffic. And, I think, um, I know I brought up Dennison in the past, and that one, that one needs some significant work.
Dennison is 1.3 million?
Yeah, that would...
That would eat up the entire amount.
I agree.
I looked at Newell, too. Newell would be about 188,000. A lot of people complaining about Newell Avenue, so that would be another one. It's right across from Happy Harbor.
It is. Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's actually a go-on very quickly, at least, uh...
All right. Anything else?
I don't, no.
I'm gonna go with Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Chair. We have the money for it all, 1.5. We're not using it all yet. We still have half a million not being used. Take another, uh, 1.3, put them to do the roads, and they're doing nothing with it. We can't keep up. I mean, they're busy enough, and they can't catch up what we already give them. Uh, these money, where they came from? School, buildings?
Yeah.
I think the town hall need to be, need work.
It does.
I mean, it's, it's very, very embarrassed, walking in a door, no carpet. People going up there for a meeting, no, no, uh, countables, heat, sweating fan, you can't hear each other, you can't, that's embarrassed, you know? I think those monies should be...
It's a bit hot.
Most of them come to buildings, and only town hall, not other buildings, because other, other buildings, we, we fund already for different buildings, they have enough money. And you can wanna take some out for the sidewalk, it's, it's fine. Road, I mean, you wanna put Everett Street, hold on to see what National Grid they're gonna provide, because they cut on the road, every house, whatever, I think, 50 feet or 100, if it's any cut, they're responsible to do the whole road. If you wanna take a half a million, put it against Everett Street for hold, I don't mind, but the, the 800,000 should be to the sidewalk and the town hall. That's what should just... I'm not too crazy on the road, because we already borrowed money, 1.5 million every year, and we're, we're not using it, so put money there and sit on it.
Go ahead, Kevin.
My only question is, is when you're getting, you're saying numbers, Everett Street's 650,000 and, and, um, you know, all the roads off Everett Street, the ones that, that the gas company...
Yeah.
Get Coombe Street and stuff, that number you give us, is that including, is that what it would be minus the whatever national, uh, the gas company kicks in, or is it 650,000, not even including what?
It was 615,000 according, according to the DPW, when they gave us this list back in March, and they said, these are the roads we wanted to do.
So we don't know if that includes gas money for their trenches that they've done?
Well, it does say, plus all the park and summer gas is currently being upgraded on the streets, so National Grid could be asked to contribute to paving costs similar to the Main Street project. Estimated contribution, 24 to 5,000 dollars. So it wasn't very much, but it was included. So it was 615,000 to do Everett, Summer, and Park. That was from the list that we had last March.
Because my, my thing is, is that 45,000 for, for the gas company to do, you know, Everett and all those, I'd just like to see how they calculate 45,000 dollars to mill and pave. I mean, I, I did the driving at my house, and it was 15,000 dollars, and I was just paving it. I mean, that was my only question.
You all set?
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna go with Shanier first.
A little bit, um, sorry. A little bit on Everett Street. I've complained a lot about Everett Street during its construction, and one of the meetings, Heather spoke that, uh, she negotiated with National Grid for 45,000 dollars towards what was estimated their cost of what it would cost to pay what they did for work. And as Heather left, and we talked with Matt about it, Matt said he had no clue where they even came up with the figure of 45,000 dollars, because there was, if I recall correctly, there was much more asphalt alone that would be needed than the 45,000 dollars.
I'm sure.
And the other thing that we had much discussion about was the fact that, uh, he could forcibly make them do eight feet, which is almost half the roadway. But the other part of the thing is the town bylaw that says the laterals, if you dig up more than, if it's less than 50 feet or less, that that whole section has to be paved. So it's pretty much all of Everett Street. And if you see today, National Grid there is doing some tie-ins, actually, I believe, to the houses, and there's additional cuts that need to be done. I'm not too sure of taking 1.3 million dollars from the Wells money and using it for roadways, but I know roadways need to be done. They didn't appropriate 105,000 dollars this year for roads. I don't even know if they went for bond.
1.5 million.
They didn't do that this year.
It's not there.
And I don't even know if they bonded that money that they're using for roads, or if it came out of the, the budget. But, uh, I do know, looking at the study that was done, that they said best roads fixed first to the worst roads. But I look like Dresser Street. Dresser Street is a, another Main Street, if you want to call it, it's a bypass to Main Street to go to the hospital and those kind of locations, and it's in terrible, terrible shape. And on that street alone, you got a nursing home, you've got a school that is utilized, you got a, a field, and you got a roadway that brings you to the hospital. It's heavily, heavily traveled, and it's a terrible, terrible road. People come down the street, they go on the wrong side of the road to get, miss the bumps. And you go to the other side of Main Street, you go Harrington Street, Edward Street. Now, when I was doing my campaign, I had people from Edward Street come to me and say, geez, why don't they do something for Edward Street? You got the school that is an apartment place now, you got two funeral homes, you got a church, you have a, uh, facility that Harrington Hospital greatly used, and Edward Street is the other bypass to Main Street. So the roads are in good shape, I mean, bad shape. But I also know that, I use the senior center, for instance, is in tough shape, needs to be worked on. We, uh, we acquired a building that we really did nothing to, uh, is probably 50 years old. I can remember being on the fire station, setting up lights there for the great-grand ball we used to put on for the generals. It's got, for the veterans, too.
Is this the Civil War?
Nothing was done when we purchased the building, just, just quick fixes. So, I know we have a lot of money in stabilization. I don't know what we have in capital money, it's stored off in there, but I, I, I look at the fact that if we've got 3 million dollars in stabilization, whether, I don't know, we're overtaxing the people. Why don't we take that money and utilize it for some of the infrastructure, some of the building needs that need to be done? The roads, I mean, when you talked about the plan borrowing money, you talked 10 million dollars that you authorized the Town Manager to do. You know, by the time this 10 million dollars is spent in 10 years, that 10 million dollars is gonna amount to no money, that it's gonna not do what you expected it to do with inflation and the cost of materials. I was, was under the impression, bond at 10 million dollars, now do all the roads, get it done with, and it would satisfy everything, but you gotta pay for that. And where do you do that? You gotta start somewhere. You, you, you know, the 1 million dollars a year is not, it's not cutting it. It's not cutting, and the roads are the biggest thing that affects the people in this community more than buildings, and I know we need to dig in our buildings, too, but we gotta come to a happy medium here to see, you know, how to make it work, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.
You all set?
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna go to Councilor Adams first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I differ from what George is saying a little bit. I think schools is probably one of the most important parts, can you think of back in aspects?
Yes.
And, and I think we probably agree on all the other things. I would recommend at this point in time, because we don't, this great, all these roads we're talking about, do you have a pavement management plan in place? Follow through with it, don't steer off course, but I'm also in agreement to give some money to the roads if we, there's something that we can fix this year, still fix this year. Uh, I, I think, throw it all out there. We built this capital stabilization fund, that's 250,000 dollars in right now. You put 1.3 in there, now you're gonna have about 1.5, damn, I can't, I suck at math, 8, 5, whatever. All right, we know what I'm saying. So you got it, uh, you putting that in there. I do agree with the buildings. The infrastructure, this is all part of it. So, you know, I, I agree with the sidewalks, giving some money, but as long as it can get done this year, and maybe this year is June 30th, by June 30th, but to help out. So I think it'd be short sighted just to do 1, 3 for all roads, especially if we can't get them all done, and we have a pavement management plan in place. There has to be a lot of patience, 'cause these roads didn't happen 10 years ago. Uh, it's just mismanagement for all those years before that, and I think we've got a great plan, you know, and we continue to go down that plan and then maintain the ones we have. If it, if I'm not mistaken, the, the crack ceiling and stuff like that, we have leftover money, and that's what they're utilizing this year to do, because I know they already started on a crack ceiling right in the springtime, I believe it was. So those things are happening. I, I would just recommend us taking a harder look, because Matt's not here. I'd love to hear from the Town Manager and the Town Accountant as well, but, you know, we don't know if National Grid's gonna go back in. We don't know if they're gonna dig. What about water? What about sewer? All these lines that end up going in, or maybe there's a temporary fix, follow the bylaws and make sure everything is covered like it should be, um, with good oversight. I, I think it's just short sighted, just as in 1.3. I can't really, but I will say this, at the Town Council, without further investigation on this, I don't know if I would be able to vote for that on Monday, or whenever we do. I think it just needs to be, but I think it's a good idea to say, what are we doing with the Wells money? And if we throw in a capital, two-thirds vote taken out, we can concentrate on the roads, we could do the sidewalks, we can, and I think we can support what you're looking for, too, at the same time. But I would, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from the Town Manager.
I will, I will call on him.
Okay.
I'll go with Councilor Williams next.
So, um, I think I, I do agree with Councilor Dow and Councilor Adams, uh, just kinda see what, what is in that account at this point, and, and what, um, because there, there are a lot of different needs. Um, I totally agree about all of them, at least everyone talked about. Um, and, and Dresser Street, I, you know, drive that every day. Um, you know, but I would be curious to see what's left in the account and sort of like thinking about whether we need to put that full amount into that account, rather than put it into stabilization and, and, you know, and then dip into it later when things come up. So I, I agree with the, the, from the, from the Town Accountant.
Okay. I will call on him. First, I'll go to Councilor Steves. I have a proleterian. All right. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Um, no question that we have a variety of different priorities here in town. You know, when I came here two years ago, you pointed out there was a lot of things that needed to be worked on. You know, from where I sit, it's a balanced approach, trying to tackle all of them at the same time. I mean, we could put one to the top of a list, um, but I think there are so many things that need attention, um, you know, our infrastructure, our buildings, our roads, sidewalks. At least in my opinion, working with Ms. Harnoy, we've tried to make sure we're hitting fire on our own just at the same time. And Mr. Shanier's point about the stabilization, part of good management, being able to borrow money and curry favor with the ratings agencies, is to show that you're able to manage your priorities and put money away in rainy day funds, so that you can weather a recession or anything that comes our way. And there's a lot of things that are coming down the pipe that, that could be challenging. We're already in a situation where we're seeing escalating costs. Um, I've, you know, I, I've listened to the discussion, I know, I spoke to Matt today, he doesn't have any opinion one way or the other on how you use the monies. He said they always welcome additional monies. They midway through the season, if they had to go out and bid, he doesn't know if he could actually utilize all of it. In this bidding season, they might be able to do some small part. Um, you know, I'll, I'll throw it out, I know it's not a popular, um, issue with some folks, but when they did the estimates of probable cause of the, um, for the fire station before the, the ballot question, those monies were predicated on costs almost two years old now. We've seen inflation in not only real estate, but cost of materials, labor, so there could be some issues by the time we get to the end of that project, that you may need some additional funding. Now, that's, that's a ways down the road, but, you know, I believe that when you have certain proceeds, especially from real estate, maybe you should be going back into real estate or to the facilities. I mean, it's clear that it's within the council's purview, how they wanna appropriate, but the discussion, and maybe we have a plan on, um, utilizing the money for the roads, maybe we need to look at some of the maintenance of the buildings and things that might be in appropriate use. The point that Councilor Marchetti mentioned earlier, when we initially looked at pavement management, we looked at using some of the money from the marijuana sales. Unfortunately, as I've, I've verbalized, I, I really should get you folks a, a graphic on this, um, of the four host community agreements that we have, only one has really lived up to the expectations that they set, and they've even cautioned me that, you know, given the prevalence of retail facilities around Mass, Massachusetts, the market is saturated. We have the second one come online on 169, we have Me Meadows, uh, we will have the one on Main Street coming on shortly, hopefully between now and the end of the year, and the fourth one is still, um, you know, really in a stage where it's not clear whether they're ever gonna get off the ground. So, I've received some revised estimates from these folks, and we will continue to receive some steady monies, but I sent out an email to the council the other day, um, talking about the legislature and their proposed overhaul of some of the cannabis laws. The governor actually did sign that last week, which is going to try and sunset some of the impact fees that we can get in the community and reexamine how we're using them. I think we're not in bad shape, because I think we can make an argument that people I think we're not in bad shape, because I think we can make an argument that people coming in, our infrastructure, our roads. So we will continue to try and use the impact fees that we get for these types of purposes. But as far as where to use this money, balanced approach, we're already hitting the streets. I would say either save it for any unforeseen costs with some of the building projects or tackle some of the issues that you have with priorities on this building and some of our other older buildings. So that would be, come my thought. But not to touch the stabilization. And I don't know what Ms. Harnoy has to say.
Go right ahead. Ms. Harnoy.
The money from the sale of the Wells Building is in an account called the Sale of Real Estates. It's receipts reserved for appropriation. So what I would recommend, I guess, at this point is either the money can stay in that account. And as we go along, if there are certain projects that we want to earmark a certain amount of money from, then we can appropriate it from this account. Or what you could do is transfer some of it, all of it, to, to like the capital stabilization. But just knowing that when you come up with your priorities, that it's going to take a two thirds vote of the council in order to, you know, allocate the monies to a certain project.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to have a question for Ms. Harnoy. With the account it's in now, it's just a majority, right? Some majority vote?
That's correct. And it is reserved to be used for anything, any purposes for which you could borrow for five years or more. So it is more towards something capital in nature.
Okay.
That's good enough.
Council, Mr. Steve, [inaudible].
The most, thank you.
Council Steves.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One is that I noticed when we talk about stabilization, and we haven't used much of that during the whole COVID emergency. So we have, how much do we have? About five million, right?
I don't think we have quite that much.
But, oh, it's not, I'm somewhere close to it. And so I was curious, so being a rainy day fund, we obviously have quite a bit left. So, and I agree with what the manager was saying, that we don't want to tackle it unless we have to. But, you know, we may, we may have to. The other issue is, as far as buildings go, have we looked into state historical commission grants for doing buildings, especially this one?
You had asked me that before, and I put some feelers out to different organizations. I didn't get any strong feedback. I can revisit it.
Because that's a state level thing. And I know that Oxford did a whole very thick historical commission file, it was like this thing, to do the library. And they got several hundred thousand, I don't remember what the total figure was. So that might be something worth doing for this. I mean, there probably is a match, so we might be able to take some of the match out of the Wells Project money. And I think that might be a better way to use some of that funds, and wouldn't, it wouldn't take anywhere near like the one point three million that we currently have in it. But if we were to use something like that, I think we'd be able to double the effect by getting some state funds to help the, help the project that really needs to be done, it's been in the middle for a really long time.
Yosa? All right, anybody else have anything?
Just a caveat. I know, Beth and I talked about this multiple times. I sent that, I sent something to Los Angeles back in eighteen on the help of the building. I can send that to you. I still, I believe I still have the email on it to the town manager.
I would like to add that we also have funds left over. This is the list that you sent me, Karen. Funds that are left over that have not been touched yet or just sitting there. Projects haven't been completed, like BPW's sidewalk repairs. According to this, there's a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in that account, according to this list. I don't know if that's an updated list, but that's something we can also tap into. There was funds in here for town hall renovations, town hall roof repairs, building repairs. So there are a lot of funds in the capital projects, fund balances that haven't been touched yet. So I would like it if we could take a look at that as well, and see if we can tap into some of that, those funds as well. Mr. Chenier?
Again, not to disagree with the manager with stabilization funds money, but other issues of those for an example. You have funds that are in here for town hall repair. It's been there for years, but the repairs haven't been done. We talked about the carpets already, we've been talking about that since November, since I returned. And about the carpets and the money, and it's still not done. I know they've been done. We have a lot of money out in that, in those accounts for jobs that aren't being done. And I understand that, and I don't, if they were to... My statement was, roads affect every single citizen in this community. I do understand schools is a big issue. It affects the people that utilize the schools, and it affects us pregnant and people. I understand that schools is a priority. But the roads, it affects everybody in this community. And I just don't think we're fulfilling the needs of the community by not repairing those roads more, more. Just like today, for now, we appropriated the money of one million dollars to do three roads. We bypassed from the management plan Gulfwood Road, Coombe Street. We don't follow the management plan. We take that management plan and we deviate from it. That's all. I mean, I have to stay in the priority. We need to do things. We need to, I look at the elderly center. We have, the town's infrastructure is in poor shape. But it's, we need to come up with a good feasible plan that works for everything.
All right.
Thank you.
Council Dow?
I agree with you, the road will be, they need to be done. But we already have the plan and money set up, ten million dollars, one million, one point five every year, and we can't use this. So what we do and take more money, put them there, and you can't either use them on the road. We have a lot of things coming up. It's not only the road. The road is already, we have a plan, we have money to take care of and everything. If we're going to keep taking money from here and skip this one and do this one, it'll never be organized. It's all about organize and follow your plan, the way you set it up, you vote on all the council. If you're going to keep now saying, no, we want to skip this one, we want to do this one, and then they'll put, it's going to be must, again, like before, nothing's going to be done. I don't think we should take those money, put them through the road. We have already planned, we have money coming in, let's use it. We're not using one point five, we want to use one million this year. We still have half a million, so take those money, put them there, you're not going to use them once it's good for it.
I don't want the half a million dollars there.
Yeah, but we have money already set up for that. That's the issue. I believe in the past, everybody want to skip things and move things around, and not in the right way. I mean, you got a plan. Road is important, but we have already a plan for the road. Let's plan for the sidewalk, let's plan for building, let's plan for, we have a trash coming up.
I agree.
Next year, we have, we have the trash we're going to pick up. We have, we have a lot of things. I know everybody say road, road, road. But they can do so much, and it's not like we don't have the money. We already have the money, borrow every year, you know, certain amount. Let's skip that. I mean, you're going to start taking money from different places to do that section or that section. They're not going to finish it. They're not going to do nothing, because we have the money and they can't keep up. So we're not doing too good for the town or for the people. I think those one point three sidewalk and buildings, I mean, you want to put a little bit on the side for emergency, for certain things, I understand. But to take one million or one point three to go fix more road, and they can't, we need, we need help. Hire people, you can't keep up. I mean, we can sit all day long and say, we need to fix the road. Yeah, we all know that. But I don't think we should touch those money and we start to change our plan. I think we have a great plan. If we're going to start a play with it, everything's going to be screwed up.
Okay, you also? Ms. Doyle?
I just wanted to add to George's great comment that the sidewalks are used by everybody too. So not just the roads, but the sidewalks. And thank you, Joe, for mentioning sidewalks. We can't forget sidewalks. They're in really bad shape. I've seen so many people trip, and it's only a matter of time that something serious happens, or may or may not be sued, I don't know.
All right.
Something to think about.
Thank you. Council Reaves?
I think I would recommend, since Ms. Harnoy's mentioned that the money can stay in that account and can be used for projects as they come up, that might be, you know, the best option and sort of thinking about what proposals come up and as they come up and take them, you know, separately.
All right, thank you. The problem with leaving them in that account is that it, that it doesn't, you don't need a two thirds vote, just take it out of there. Or maybe that's a good thing. I'm not sure. My question to the town manager is, how come we're not, we're not doing one point five million this year? That was your plan, your original plan, one point five million each year. This year, we haven't even done a million.
I would, in all fairness, I would have to get Mr. DeJardine's input on why we were only able to do that many. Because I don't have any answer for this.
Okay, I would just like an answer on that, really. Full transparency. All right, does anybody have anything else on this?
I just have a few.
Sure, go ahead.
I think everybody wants to do the roads, no problem. And I don't want to deviate from this. So if we can find money to do those, or if we wanted to, or something like that, that we had originally planned. And it can get done this year, great, not, let's just push it to next year. But, you know, we have the sidewalk for a hundred thousand. Steve, how much, how much sidewalk?
Hundred twenty-four.
Yeah, just quite a bit.
Quite a bit.
A sidewalk out there needs to be done. I don't know what's in the account for that.
Hundred twenty-four.
Hundred twenty-four thousand.
It was. I don't know if it's still that, but that's the last that I had.
My question is, have we [inaudible]?
People walk on it every day, I mean, that's important.
Absolutely, and I, you know, we all say so. If that a hundred twenty-four, maybe, Mr. Chair, get with Matt and say, you know, can we hire a company to come in here and do a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars worth of sidewalks in the town? Obviously, we've got to pay attention if there's anything going to be pulled up or anything like that, so we don't want to cut. But, I mean, so we got that there, and then we can allocate maybe some more next year. Because I know we've found money, capital money, that wasn't being utilized. That was in two thousand eighteen, I would say nineteen. And, you know, I was hoping that that would take place, but maybe it did, maybe it didn't. But I think everybody's in agreement. Maybe, I don't, I agree with you. I don't know if a two thirds vote is better than a simple majority, but I can borrow from the simple majority, based on a bond, correct? Karen? We can borrow off of that, right? We can borrow off of it, leaving it in the account it's in now?
We don't need to borrow away to term on it.
You just mean you can allocate it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So why not leave that there and then throw some money in capital stabilization money, funds too, to kick that off for next year as well? So I just, I think there's a lot more research and it has to happen. I think it's a lot of great questions and concerns, so.
Council Steves?
I think that would make a lot of sense. Maybe we could do like half and half, put half in capital stabilization, half into the other stuff. But I think we do need to, if we've got this huge sum of money, I would kind of agree that we don't want to just try to throw that projects that, that we're already having issues getting stuff done. I like the idea of people talking about the idea of doing some of these sidewalks. I think that's really important. Maybe we need to prioritize which ones. If we're going to do that hundred thousand plus on sidewalks specifically, then we probably need to prioritize which ones we're going to do. Main Street's in terrible shape.
It sure is.
Sidewalks out there.
Main Street's bad too.
Sidewalks are bad everywhere.
Never shoot down the roads. You can just pick a street.
We probably could, but the catch is that we would, we would easily expend all of that money and not get half of the sidewalks done that need to get done.
Can it go along with another project too?
So we have a meeting scheduled for September first. Do you want to push this off till the summer first? I would have no problem with that. It's up to this committee, if that's what you want.
I'd like to make the motion to push it off till the next meeting.
But before we do that, are we having a meeting on September first? Because that is the Thursday before Labor Day. Which I thought was kind of odd, but that's what they wanted. You have no problem with that? I have no problem with it.
I don't.
You have a term, what day do you call it for?
If my math...
Well, it was Matt, Matt requested it.
Correctly. I know he couldn't have some of the information on the twenty-fifth that he needed. We aren't having a meeting to the twelfth. We don't want to do it the Thursday before the twelfth, because anything we voted would be within the forty-eight hours. So I think mathematically, we had to go to the first, so that he would get the information he's waiting on. We would have time to vote on it, to get it on the agenda and not be within the forty-eight hour posting window. We waited till the Thursday before the twelfth.
The first is okay with me, or whatever you guys?
It's okay with me.
It's a mouthful, but that's...
You can postpone it till the first.
You can postpone it even further if you find it...
No, we postponed it to the first.
Till the first.
That way we postpone it to a date. September first, all right? And if we could get some information, Mr. Town Manager, on, on the use of the funds and what roads we could use, what sidewalks we could use it on, I would appreciate it for the first.
Take it some notes.
All right. Is that okay? Oh, Mr. Council Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has that meeting been posted yet or set up in stone or for the first?
It's been, it was just sent to me in an email that he wants it on the first.
Who's he?
Matt, Matt DeJardine. I thought maybe the thirtieth, because that'd be like a Tuesday or something would be better.
I would prefer that myself, and I'll explain why after the meeting as well.
It's clear right now, I don't have a problem.
Well.
It's personal?
There's an email, there's an email coming down, and we're trying to reserve Thursdays for council, the whole or special town council. And it also will free up time to get agendas posted appropriately as per the general government meeting that we had earlier this week that had concerns. So I would prefer not that, but Thursday if it's possible.
So it's Tuesday, all right, the thirtieth?
Okay, I meant, I meant my thing to the thirtieth, so take it off the first, like I said. But if it's a thirty, be fine with me.
Do you want to speak with Matt?
Would you like to know, ask, let Nora know and talk to Matt about it?
Yes.
All right.
So I'm just attentive before...
August thirtieth.
I don't know, it isn't a word.
August thirtieth, six P M. How's that?
Fine with me.
August thirty-first is a Wednesday, and it's okay with me too.
August thirtieth, it's six thirty, Jeng Gub's meeting is already set up. Hasn't been formally posted, but we've already, we've already called for it at our meeting to finish up the [inaudible].
Okay.
We'll go right after that.
We'll go after you then.
Yeah.
All right, after, after Jeng Gub.
I probably predict seven o'clock at least, because you're going over the bylaw, yeah?
Yeah, we should be, it should be fairly quick though, because I mean, we got all this stuff from Eric, which I, he's already sent most of it. And I sent him one email about, about another, a possible addition that I wanted him to look into. But it was actually about your issue about having the, about having the actual legal reference for getting, for entry property, which he didn't originally disagree with.
Six thirty, you're immediately following.
Yeah, six thirty, I'm immediately following.
Mine's slated for six thirty.
His stats at six thirty. Jeng Gub's at six thirty.
Jeng Gub's at six thirty.
So we gotta go seven o'clock, seven o'clock.
Make it seven, yeah.
Immediately follow, immediately follow.
And we already have a council, the whole slated for the twenty-third, so.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Okay.
So we want to vote on postponing it till August thirtieth at seven P M. or immediately following, general, [inaudible]. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, what happened to that motion I made now? Just to make sure we're, that's...
That's right, you made a motion. Should we have him withdraw that first, or?
Yeah, he has to withdraw.
I'll withdraw if he withdraws his second.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion. I just want to make sure it's legal.
Is that the [inaudible]?
I forgot about it.
I just, I don't know what the proper way is to do it. I just want to make sure it's done right. I don't want to come back and haunt us.
Technically, we already adjourned, but...
That's okay, we haven't adjourned it, but you can, you can always...
So motion to adjourn.
I wish you would.
All in favor? All right, thank you.